Welcome to KRQ's New Mexico News Insiders. Here's Gabrielle Burkhart and Chris McKee, sponsored by New Mexico PBS.
So our guest this week is no stranger to really making headlines or breaking the mold, as you could say. Her presence in a professionally male-dominated role has made waves in recent years. She is the first woman to serve as the Fire Chief in Albuquerque Fire Rescue's 123-year history, and her name is Emily Harmio. I mentioned headlines more recently. Chief Harmio has also been in the hot seat defending a change that her administration has tried to make in the realm of staffing Albuquerque's fire stations, and something that turned into hours of debate at a recent city council meeting.
Yeah, Chief Harmio fielded lots of questions and concerns from Albuquerque city councillors at a very lengthy council meeting in early March. She joins us here for the first time on the podcast. Chief Harmio, thanks so much for being here.
Thank you for having me.
So as we do with a lot of our first-time guests and people of leadership in our community, let's learn a little bit more about you first. We'll take this in layers. According to your bio, you grew up in rural New Mexico, went to school in Iowa, then returned to New Mexico where you taught and coached for four years in Albuquerque Public Schools before joining AFR in 2005. So first, what made you want to make that switch from teaching and coaching to joining the Fire Department?
So I was a teacher at the Juvenile Detention Center. I was an English teacher, and we would frequently bring in guests to talk to our students about careers to try to help them see what else was out there while they were incarcerated. And I had a guest speaker in my class from the Fire Department. It's truly a testament to recruiting. It's not something that I would have ever have thought of for myself back then. So there was a firefighter that came in to talk to my class, and I got really interested in the profession listening to him. And so I got his information, connected with him later, and he kind of helped start me down the path of getting the prerequisites done that I needed to try out for the Fire Department.
Teaching to firefighting. Did you find any parallels there?
Interestingly, I've spent a part of my career in our training division, so I was able to kind of merge like two of my passions together and start training firefighters and teaching firefighters. And I still love kids, so any opportunity I get to work with youth in my current role, I'm able to kind of merge it there.
Do you ever look back and think, when I was a teacher, I'd never thought I would be Fire Chief? Or did you just feel like there was a leadership role destined for your path? I mean, it just, it seems so different, you know, the two.
Hundred percent never expected to be here when I made that leap into the fire service, you know, 20 years ago.
Yeah, that's, it's pretty incredible. And obviously, this is a male-dominated role that you have stepped into as the Chief of Albuquerque Fire Rescue. That happened in March 2023, as I understand. So about two years ago, you officially became the Chief. What has the job been like? And aside from the recent staffing controversy, which I think we're going to get more to, so I don't want to dive into it quite yet, but what are some of the big challenges of the job? And how has the job been?
I think that across the country, the fire service is very, it's just a challenging role to assume a leadership role in this line of work. Public safety right now between us and law enforcement, EMS, we're facing a lot of challenges in our, in our cities. And so it's, there's so much at us that we have to make decisions about. So you, I think you go into it with all of these ideas about how you're going to accomplish making improvements, and you start to make progress in some areas, and some areas are really challenging. So it's been, it's been, and also as a firefighter, we grow up in our organization, I think, we don't, we don't, no one expects that they're going to be the chief. So there's not really a lot of training that you can get as a firefighter to understand what it means in like the political realm. And so there's a lot of like trial by fire there when you assume a leadership role in public safety, because we're not, we don't have poli sci degrees. We're firefighters that have promoted up through the ranks. So there's this steep learning curve there, too.
Yeah, that is interesting. What does it take to become a firefighter or a paramedic with AFR? You know, I know you have to be at least 18 years old with a high school diploma to qualify, but what sort of training does a person undergo to join the department?
So we have, we have a 19-week academy that a firefighter goes through, or a cadet goes through, very physically and mentally challenging to go through our academy, because you have to be ready to work in very high-stress environments and do very grueling work at, you know, on a split second. So very grueling 19-week academy. And then if you come in with your EMT Basic, you are sent out to the field as a probationary firefighter. If you do not have that EMT Basic license, then we hold you back, and then we put you through another very challenging eight-week program, kind of a very like quick program to get you your EMT Basic license, and then those firefighters are able to get out. And then paramedic school is another about year of training that we use our local institutions to help us get that training for our firefighters.
In addition?
In addition.
Okay.
So along the lines of just how many people you have working for AFR, according to the city's website, you manage 777 personnel at 22, soon to be 23, fire stations. And there's about a daily minimum staffing of 210 people. Is that right?
That's correct.
And then vacancy-wise, about how many people are you looking for? Because I think part of what we'll get into a little bit here is that there have been challenges recruiting, but what are the vacancies?
So we're actually very lucky. We're, we've been slowly chipping away at our vacancy rate. And actually, our current mayor, Mayor Keller, has not made us hold a vacancy savings, which has been awesome for our staffing. So we are, right now, we're short approximately 30 firefighters. We just graduated a class of 16, and we're hiring for our next cadet class, so hoping to fill those. It always fluctuates, and we'll never fully be staffed because there's retirements throughout the year, and we can never, we project, but we can never account for those. So we will hire up to our vacancy rate, and then it kind of goes up and down. But we're in a really good spot right now with vacancies.
What is your just general sales pitch? Why become a firefighter?
Firefighting is, I think, I think it's the best branch of public safety, because we, when, when people call 911 for the Fire Department, we're, we're always responding out to help. There's no, there's no element of stopping someone from committing a crime or anything like that. We're going out to help people in probably the worst moment of their life, whether it be a fire or a medical emergency. When you come to work, it's always something different. No two days on the job will ever look the same. So I think for a lot of people that like that variety, there's a lot of, it's very fulfilling, but also just such a huge need. So you, you, you come to work and you're able to really help your community. And so I think it's, I think it's one of the best public safety professions that you can, can sign up for.
Yeah, when I moved to New Mexico, one thing that I learned about firefighting is like, okay, you, you work for Albuquerque Fire Rescue, but a lot, if not the majority of your calls are medical-related, right? Can you give us a percentage, roughly, how many calls does AFR respond to that are medical-related and not just, you know, a house is on fire?
Yeah, that's a great question, because I think you think firefighter, and you think all we do all day is fight fire, but we don't see a lot of big structure fires, which is a good thing. That's fire prevention at work and all the codes and safety things we have. So our medical calls, it fluctuates year to year, but we average anywhere from usually around 85% of our calls are EMS calls, medical calls.
Okay, which brings us to one of the most recent issues at hand, and that is what happened during a six-hour city council meeting on March 3. It was contentious at times with lengthy back and forth between you and some of the city councillors. We heard it described a few different ways the issue at hand, some claiming a quote dissolution of rescue units, others saying this proposed staff change goes against the quote gold standard of how to staff rescue units. But tell us first, in layman's terms, and as simply as you can, what is the issue at hand, your idea to address staffing?
So these are, these are very structural issues that we've had in our department my entire career. So I've been with AFR for 20 years. I've been a paramedic for 20 years. I also have a master's in public health. So this is really kind of like my passion, and, and I really wanted to see how we could not only improve our, improve the way that we staff internally, there's a lot of benefits, but also how can we take what we have and provide a better service? And I don't think that trying to showcase that at city council really got across like what it is that we're trying to solve, because just like you said, it got very contentious. But what we were really, what, what the, the staffing plan that I have is, is it's about four years of, of work that kind of culminated with a staffing change this year. And we, we have, not all of our firefighters are paramedics. Some are EMT Basics, so that's that eight-week class that I, I mentioned. And then some of our firefighters have the paramedic training. The way that we staff currently is, we'll take a, we'll take a fire station that has two trucks. They have the engine, which has four firefighters on it, EMT Basic firefighters, so the very basic level of training. We have a rescue at that same station, which is the big red ambulance. We call it a rescue because it has a very critical role on rescue and fire and all of these things, other, other types of calls. But it has two firefighters who are also paramedics. There's a lieutenant and a driver, so they also have rank on that truck. They're not just the lowest rank, which is firefighter. So those, that's how we currently staff. What, what this plan did, we've been doing this since 2023 at two stations, I was trying to add four more stations where rather than keep the two paramedics on the rescue, I would move one to the engine, and then one of those firefighters would move over to the rescue. So, so it's not a dilution, it's an expansion of services, because now on both, on both of those trucks, they have a paramedic. And every time you call 911 and you get a response from that fire station, you get a paramedic on your call. So if we were to take our call volume, let's say, let's say you, that, that station ran 10 calls that day, and two of them were fire calls, so that means automatically we'll take those two out of the mix. If the rescue took four of those calls, they would have a paramedic on those four calls. If the engine took four calls, they would not have a paramedic. What this plan did is for those eight calls, anytime that rescuer, that engine goes on a call, they would get a paramedic. So it would be an expansion of those, using the paramedics that we have.
Okay, so you'd basically take the pair and split the pair of paramedics, which is why we kept hearing that word split?
Correct.
Okay.
But in the same sense, though, each paramedic would be teamed around at least folks that have the EMT Basic training?
Correct.
It's part of the idea here to help maybe bring up some of the EMT Basic skills that, you know, obviously, they get an eight-week course, but it's, let's be honest, right? You got to put skills into practice over and over and over again to get really good at them. Is part of that, the idea here?
Yes. So internally, that's another huge benefit of this, both on the EMS, the medical side and the fire side. The, we have, one of the stations, Station 3 in the Nob Hill area, has been doing this for two years. And when I was visiting that station a couple months ago, one of the firefighters told me, he's an EMT Basic, he's assigned to the firefighter position on the engine, and he told me that working with the paramedic on the engine, and then also rotating onto the rescue was making him a better EMT, because he was learning a lot of that side of the, the job that he wouldn't have if he wasn't at that station. And then also related to that is the fire side of the job. So our engines have a very different role on a fire than our rescue, than our ambulance does. On a fire, the rescue generally gets on scene and either provides patient care, or they go in and they provide search. So they go into a fire, and they look for victims, and they pull victims out, which is obviously a critical role on the fire. But what they don't do generally is the functions of the engine are the latter, which is pulling the hose and finding the fire and putting the fire out. And so what we've seen over the years is that you, you start to lose skills if you're not doing them. And so our paramedics, because you cannot get off of the rescue, you start to lose those skills. And so our stations where people are able to rotate are able to maintain the skills that they get in their training.
So to the point of, of some of the other benefits, I think, here, that's certainly one of them you mentioned, but splitting these paramedic teams to place one on a fire engine and one in a rescue unit, it sounds like, as you mentioned, this has already been in place at two Albuquerque fire stations. And remember, there's 22 currently right now. The idea was to expand it to four more, so you get six total. So a little more than a quarter of the stations, right, would be getting this model. The idea as well, it sounds like, is to help address response times. How did this become such a point of contention, do you think?
First of all, I think that I found out about it when the resolution came through at the end of the day on Friday.
And we should say what the resolution is. I'm sorry to interrupt, but, but essentially, that resolution is, is city council saying that to staff these rescue units, they must have two paramedics, AKA, here's a piece of legislation that cannot, that, that says you can't break them into pairs, right?
Correct.
So you found out about this, as you were saying?
Yes.
On Friday?
Yes. So this resolution was drafted and introduced with the agenda on Friday for immediate action on Monday, three days later. And the cosponsors of the legislation had not reached out to me in advance to ask me about the legislation, ask me if it, you know, if there was a safety issue in our department, to, to ask me any questions. And so that's how, I mean, it was legislation that dictated Fire Department staffing without consulting with the Fire Chief, which was immediately concerning to me. As Fire Chief, I, I, I value the work that I do with our elected officials, and they're obviously critical to how our city operates, both our legislative and our executive branch. But it's, I'm, I'm, my administration and our department is the expert here, and it's concerning to have that drafted for immediate action on Monday without my input into that legislation.
And we should say the two councillors that were behind this are councillor Joaquin Baca and also councillor Dan Lewis. So this came at a very quick pace. And I think if you get into the meeting, you kind of hear some of the dialogue between councillors and yourself. There was one other element of this that, that I wanted to ask you is just that, you know, we've seen, I think, for years, the call to address response times. You said this would help response times. How much so? Would this be, you know, how much of a benefit, in your opinion, would this be towards addressing response times?
There was a great question during the meeting, and I don't remember who asked it, but they asked how the fire truck was going to get there faster in this model. And so I think it just really showcased how complicated this staffing plan is and the operational plan is. The way that it improves the response time is, let's take those two trucks now, and our rescues can transport people to the hospital. And that can take anywhere from an hour to two hours to get back into district. So let's say that that rescue is transporting someone to the hospital, they're gone from the district for that time period. If there's a paramedic on the engine and another critical call goes out in that district, that engine is going to get a paramedic to that patient faster than if we rely on a rescue from a neighboring district. So like, we're downtown, if the downtown trucks are out, but we have a paramedic on that engine, and let's say there's cardiac arrest, the engine's going to get there first, they're going to get the paramedic there faster while we wait for, for the rescue from an out-of-district response to get here.
We'll be right back with more of the New Mexico News Insiders.
Hi, I'm Logan Rader, host of New Mexico Living. New Mexico News Insiders is sponsored by New Mexico PBS. If you like New Mexico News Insiders, learn more about New Mexico in focus, a weekly hour-long show analyzing decisions impacting New Mexico statewide. Stream it anytime, anywhere. Visit nmpbs.org and follow them on all social media platforms. Now back to New Mexico News Insiders.
And we did hear public comment before councillors started asking you about this. Again, this meeting ran late at night, a few days after you learned about this resolution. So I want to play some of the comments that we heard from fire personnel raising their concerns at this city council meeting.
My name is Joaquin Grievo. I've been serving this city with Albuquerque Fire Rescue for 18 years, currently at the rank of captain, proudly serving in one of the busiest stations in the city, Station 5. I serve alongside the men and women behind me, and I had the opportunity to work in the field and talk on a daily basis with the rank and file. And an issue that concerns me that I'd like to express and share with you is the issue of morale. In the 18 years that I've been a part of this department, there've been many highs and many lows, but never have I seen what's going on with the dissolution of the, of the rescues. We're seeing paramedics drop their licensure because that's a direct result of this splitting of the rescue. We're seeing senior firefighters attributing their retirement to this, and many more considering and reevaluating their tenure at AFR. Those are seasoned veterans that shape, mold the young firefighters that come out today into the field. I ask that you take care of those that take care of you and yours and support the gold standard.
Yet the proposed operational change is an abandonment for what is our firefighters' values. And let it be clear, the intention of this administration is to abandon our two paramedic rescue system. The first proposal by management included every rescue to be split, the gold standard in service delivery. And you must ask yourself, why would management be imposing an abandonment of the gold standard?
Coming out of those public comments, you hear a very different sort of reaction to your idea, which, when you explain it to us, it's like, well, yeah, this sounds like you've thought about it for a long time. You've looked at the two stations who are doing it, saw, you know, maybe the benefit that could come from this. But then we're hearing from people at public comments saying, no, 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 this is an abandonment of the gold standard. So I want to take this again in, in layers if we can. Let's address the morale portion first. That captain that we heard from at city council, he says he hasn't seen morale like this in 18 years. What is your temperature on the morale of the Fire Department? And what do you attribute it to?
Yeah, great question. So change in any organization is hard, especially big change, and this is big change. We, I think, over my course of my time in the department, I've seen morale go up and down based on different reasons. There's definitely, this is a divided issue in our department. And there are some of the things that Captain Grievo mentioned during his public comment included the dropping of paramedic licensure. And the interesting thing about that is that during my time, the paramedic licenses have been dropped to actually get off of the rescue. It was the, because that's where we recognized paramedics, and they were not able to move off of that truck because we had to maintain that staffing. And so, and so that's one piece of it, that I think the context is really important about why those licenses are, are being dropped. People are young firefighters that get in. We had a lot of very veteran firefighters that spoke at council, and I will always support our, I, our union's right to organize, our union's right to free speech, to, I appreciate all the conversation I've had with firefighters who both agree and disagree. But there was not a lot of younger firefighters that spoke at council. And over the, the time that I've been in a leadership role over EMS in our department, one of the things I always ask our young firefighters is why do you not want to go to paramedic school? We were having to force probationary firefighters into paramedic school. And the number one reason that they would tell me, it wasn't pay, it was that they knew that they were not going to be able to get off of the rescue. And so to the point of those comments, there's a lot of firefighters that don't want to work on the rescue. I think probably various reasons, I would probably be assuming, as someone that worked on both trucks, I enjoyed my time on both, but I was definitely excited when I promoted off of the rescue onto the engine to have a change of pace. And so there's a lot to unpack there about kind of the, kind of systemic reasons that firefighters either agree or disagree with, with the plan. And I think it's also important to note that when our union does organize, that they bring forward, they collectively share a similar opinion. And then the union meetings are where, if you have a dissenting opinion, the, that's the appropriate venue for a union member to have a dissenting opinion. And so I, I fully expected going into the council meeting to have public comment from firefighters who oppose the, the, the plan that I'm implementing.
It looked a little bit, and maybe what you're describing, what I'm hearing, is that the union sort of lobbied the council at this meeting in a way.
It's, it, it, there was a lot of firefighters in the meeting. And so optically, I think that was a pretty, I had the council in front of me questioning me, and then I had our firefighters behind me that were, had organized, you know, to, to attend.
So aside from the council meeting, what is your temperature on the overall morale of AFR?
Man, it depends on who you talk to, right? So I think that I would say right now, overall, with just the, the kind of the public showcasing of this disagreement that we clearly have between myself and, and union leadership over these changes, I think it is affecting, that, that is affecting our firefighters. There is a lot of changes that were coming with this. We had just completed our bids. Now we had to halt movement. I think that is wearing on firefighters. I think from what the firefighters that I've spoken with, I think everybody is kind of, a lot of people have said, I can see both sides of it. I just kind of want to get back to work.
Yeah, it's like, I heard it described as like mom and dad are fighting and we're caught in the middle.
That came up at council.
Yeah, okay.
You know, we did talk about some of the benefits from your perspective. I know there are some people who are against this for various reasons. We'll talk about one of them. We heard from some city councillors after the public comments citing some outside research and just things that they've heard from community members. Councillor Nicole Rogers, she, for example, pointed to research claiming that when you have at least two paramedics on scene, you increase the probability of someone's survival. What is your response to that? Is that data that you're familiar with or something that you consider? I mean, because I guess what we're seeing here in this, with this proposal that you had, is that it's not necessarily that two paramedics won't show up to the same scene together. It's just, there's a chance they could be split depending on call volume and what's out there. But yeah, how do you respond to this idea that survivability is higher when two?
Correct. Yeah, that's a great question. I actually appreciate you asking, because that wasn't posed to me as a question in the council meeting. It was a statement refuting, really statements my medical director, who is an emergency room physician at UNM, had made related to the safety of this plan. And we weren't able to respond to that question at council. And it, any, I, this is, this is where I think I've gotten myself in trouble in writing in print quotes, because anytime you have multiple people with higher level of training, that's a good thing for our community. If I could have all of my firefighters be paramedics, then we're providing the highest level of service possible. That's not a reality, unfortunately. There's some states like California, Texas, have a lot of higher paramedic workforce, where they can really get creative with paramedic staffing. We just don't have that here. So in relation to the, the research, I don't know which research she found during the council meeting to, to cite, you know, if it was peer-reviewed research, but I think that the, the crux of all this is exactly what you said. On a critical call, you will get to paramedics, because the engine and the rescue respond together on all critical calls. But all paramedics in our system are also trained to work independently. So Albuquerque Ambulance, who is our partner, they staff their ambulances with one paramedic and an intermediate or basic, Burnaleo County Fire, who also serves this area and is also represented by the IFF Local 244, they staff one paramedic on their rescues. And so while you can say it's, it's important to try to get as many highly-trained people there together, it's also, I, I don't think it's fair to, to use that as an argument not to expand those services, so that every time you call 911 in that district, you're getting the higher-trained person, and then they come together when it's a critical call. And Albuquerque Ambulance also responds, I'm sorry, so they also respond. So now you have a third paramedic, and sometimes a fourth paramedic shows up with our quality assurance officer.
And can you remind me the difference again between, you've got an eight-week EMT Basic School, what's the standard for a paramedic?
It's, it ends up being close to a year of training if you include all of the clinicals and the testing and all of that, that they go through, their ride-alongs and all of that.
So you'd push back on that data point or, or question of survivability, that, that your plan would impact the potential survival of somebody calling 911?
Oh, yeah, I'll use an example. I think examples kind of help contextualize that. So we, we, like, let's say, let's say, we just had a call over this weekend where someone was having a seizure, and all of the transport units in that area were out transporting, all of our rescues were on calls. So the engine was on scene first, and only the paramedics can give the medication that's needed to stop that seizure. So we had to wait a prolonged period of time for somebody to be able to get there to administer that medication. So So if there had been a paramedic on that engine, they would be able to start providing some of that life-saving care before another paramedic arrives to help support that paramedic.
And just as a, I think this is something that probably most people understand, but you have to have a rescue unit to transport somebody. You can't put them on a fire engine and drive them over to a hospital.
Correct. That also came up at the council meeting, but we do not, we do not transport people on engines. You have to have a rescue to transport.
So ultimately, at the end of all of this, city counselors passed a bill, seven to two that night. The bill, again, sponsored by counselors Joaquin Baca and Dan Lewis, saying rescues must have a minimum of two paramedics. So they're basically halting your plan. All of this speaks to the idea, though, of who should set staffing requirements, right? Counselor Baca, at the end, pushed back on the idea, saying it's not politicians in this case telling you how you should staff your rescues, arguing that he was listening to community experts standing and nodding behind you, those being, you know, fellow firefighters and maybe part of the union. Mayor Keller, though, expressed concern on Facebook, writing, quote, "I'm deeply concerned that this change could hinder response times for people in desperate need. Staffing decisions should be made by professionals, in this case, our fire chief, not politicians." What are your thoughts on the bill ultimately passing?
I have a lot of thoughts on the bill ultimately passing. I appreciate counselor Bassan and counselor Feeblecorn admitting in the meeting that they did not believe it was their role to make a staffing decision. I think that, that was probably very tough for them as well with, with the room full of firefighters. But it, it, they, they didn't get into the weeds of what I was trying to do. It was really the fundamentals of, this isn't really my position to be telling the fire department how to staff. So number one, I appreciated that they recognized that. And I, we have a fair amount of firefighters that also appreciated that, that have reached out to our administration since then. I think for the other counselors, it was clear to me throughout the course of the meeting. I am not confident that when it went to vote, that all the counselors fully understood what I was trying to do with my staffing plan. There were still questions that I was receiving, clarification questions that I wasn't sure were fully understood to make that type of a decision. And so as an, as a, as the leader of this department, as the fire chief, four years of research, the support of our medical director, surveys, all of the work that we put in to get to where we were when we implemented this, I do have concerns that a, a four, six-hour council meeting just basically reversed four years of work and research, where I don't know that the votes fully understood what was going on.
Yeah, that's what strikes me about this whole thing is that, you know, we've seen issues in city council get deferred for much less. And so it's, it's wild to me to see just how quickly this happened, just from a guy who's watched city councils over the last 12 years. But, but I guess I should say, going back to the point that you were making about the research that's been done, this happened at two fire stations for the last two years. Counselors ever asked you any questions about how that went over that time? Do you, that you can recall, at least?
No, I have not really fielded any questions. And I do know counselor Rogers even mentioned stopping by one of the fire stations. She stopped by Station Three and said that when she talked to the crew, that they actually really liked it. She mentioned that in the meeting. But as far as outcomes, or I have not fielded questions from counselors specific to those two stations.
It is very perplexing when I was being told about this issue. You know, again, it's like, wait, council is telling the chief, this is, you know, how to staff the fire department, basically. And they admitted at the outset, we're not the experts here. But in the end, they ultimately made the call for you, saying, no, you can't do this. And what I hear from you is that you're claiming your plan, that is, research that you worked with a medical professional on, had two years implemented at two other stations. Your belief truly is that this will help save lives, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And, and I, I think we should note as well, the county does this as well on, on units, right? I mean, they have far, they have a larger areas that they cover, right? Because they're a little bit rural and outside of the cities proper. But the county does the same thing, if I'm correct.
Correct.
The, one point I should go back to, just to ask you very directly, how did it work at these other two stations that have implemented this staffing change? What have you seen there? Is this quicker response times over the pilot that, where this has been in place?
So what we've seen is when they've received that, like Station Three, there's three trucks there. There's a rescue, there's two rescues essentially, and then an engine there. So there's a paramedic on each of those three trucks. And so anytime you get a response from that station, you're getting a paramedic on that truck. So we are getting a paramedic to every call that Engine Three rescued through, or Medic Three responds to, which is not the same in other districts where we don't have that. And so when both of those two rescues are assigned to calls, which is fairly regularly, then that engine is able to get that paramedic there faster. What we've also really seen, especially one of our, one of our shifts, especially the captain and the crew embraced the plan as designed and really created a culture at that station where everybody works on every truck. And that has to be one of our happiest crews in our department. Like, you cannot not visit that station and just feel the positivity at that station with everybody being able to rotate. And there's, you know, like, they, they know which truck they're happy to be on, and they know which truck they're not happy to be on, but they're all sharing the load. So we've really seen the benefits there. And we're hoping to replicate that. And now, and now with this resolution, we just can't.
We'll be right back with more on New Mexico News Insiders.
Hi, I'm Monica Wiki, host of New Mexico Living. This episode of New Mexico News Insiders is sponsored by New Mexico PBS. If you enjoy New Mexico News Insiders, check out New Mexico in Focus, a great source for insights about what's happening in our state. Catch their podcasts and videos at nmpbs.org or stream it anytime, anywhere on the free PBS app. Now, let's continue to New Mexico News Insiders.
And to your point of the rotation, what you're seeing right now, and correct me if I'm wrong, though, is that people are dropping their paramedic license as to saying, I'm not a licensed paramedic anymore. You can't make me scheduled as a paramedic, so put me on a truck.
Correct.
That's what's going on.
That's what's going on. We've had, we, the fire, the fire department also has several support divisions. You can go work in our fire marshal's office and our heart team, our training division, our dispatch. And paramedics will say, hey, I would like to be considered for a fire marshal position. And we look at staffing levels in the field, and we say, we don't have enough paramedics. We can't move you, even though you've got 20 years on the job, 20 years on the rescue. We, I just turned somebody down who was interested in going into dispatch. He's been a paramedic on the rescue for 20 years, and we had to tell him we couldn't. And so then they'll, they'll say, well, if I drop my license and I'm an EMT basic, then I can't be used as paramedic staffing. And it's a kind of a loophole. And, and I feel, I mean, I feel for these firefighters. They've been, I mean, I've, I've had some variety in my career. I worked in training, I worked on the rescue, I worked on the engine. I feel for these firefighters that want to work hard, but they would like to see some ability to do something different in our department than be on the rescue. And for the 20 years I've been in this department, they've been told, no, the only way you can get us off is if you promote to captain. And that's not in the cards for a lot of firefighters.
Well, this council meeting and the discussion there, it's certainly, if you watch it, it can feel like it gets it into the weeds. And we have gotten into a little of the weeds here. If you're not part of the profession especially, I think some of this pickup is a little bit tough. But hopefully, we've made it a little easier for folks to understand. But what if, if anything, what else is there that you want people to take away from this and from your position here? How you feel about the staffing change?
I think number one, I, I'm in a weird position. I, I grew up active in our union until I promoted into an executive role where we're not a part of the union anymore. It looked very, I mean, obviously, the council meeting was very contentious and it was, was hard. These are people that I've worked side by side with. I mean, people that are my friends, you know, that were in the council chambers. And I think one of the things that, to me, is still a positive, even though it was obviously two conflicted opinions between me and, and our union there, is how impassioned our firefighters are about their career and about this work. I think to, to fill the room with a bunch of firefighters and retirees, we had a retiree that retired in the 80s that came and spoke. It just shows the love that firefighters have for our job and for our, our community and their, you know, their opinions. And we have a difference of opinion here in, in this change with, with some of our firefighters that were there. But I think it's just important to also understand that there's other firefighters that are welcoming change as well. And that's why, as a chief, I have to make the tough decision on what is going to be best for firefighters, but also the community. And sometimes, you know, it's just like, you've put 10 people in a room, we're not all going to agree on what that best thing is. But that's, that's kind of what, when you take a leadership role, that you have that tough, you have the tough job of having to decide, we are going to move forward, we're going to make this change. And so even though there was conflict there, I just want to make sure that it's not lost on me, that I, I, it was great to see so many firefighters, even if they were disagreeing with me, that are this passionate about what we're doing.
If we see a mayor veto ultimately, will you still move forward with your plan?
I, I still have intentions to try to, to try to get this through in, in any fashion that is legal for me to be able to do. So I think that there's going to be a lot that we'll see in the next, you know, several weeks to see kind of what course we take. I wouldn't, I wouldn't be making such a difficult change if I didn't believe that it was better for not only our firefighters, but also for the public. It's my job to make sure I take the resources that we have and keep our firefighters safe and keep them trained and, and all of that. But also to make sure I take our resources to make sure that when a resident of the city of Albuquerque calls and needs the fire department, that we are providing the best response to them. And I still believe that this is the best response.
Chief Hara Mio, thank you so much. We appreciate your time.